It is a 15-mile pipeline that traverses from South Austin and delivers water all the way to Lake Flugerville. This project is projected to bid this fall and also break ground in fall of 2024.
Flugerville is kind of a very special place. It's growing fast, it has a new program, and when I saw this art call come out, I was excited about it. And then in talking and going through the process and working with the city, there was a lot of excitement about bringing art to the community and, you know, just bringing something that's fun and can help identify Flugerville as it grows. The Rockman sculpture is a traveling sculpture, which again, kind of speaks to where you have the generation that's been here and then the new people coming in. It's a traveler, it's kind of a fun symbolic sculpture because if you look at the backpack, there are a lot of different pieces. And it speaks about how we pick up things along the way, skills, memories, inspiration, imagination, and it even has a companion, pebble made out of rocks. And so it kind of brightens your day.
What happened to Doug?
He's out of town.
He's in Alaska.
Okay. Ow. Okay, now I don't feel bad for him. I thought he was something scary.
No.
Man, I just can't tell you how many of you on there who've gone to Alaska and Iceland and last night.
It's nice.
The people I just met.
Is this the best time of the year to do that?
I'm guessing so.
Summer.
Yeah.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I would now formally like to open the Flugerville City Council work session to order at 5:02. We have a couple of items. The first one is in reference to the FY25 proposed budget, and City Manager Breland has asked to share a few words.
Thank you so much. This is one of the items that I get the pleasure to work with our staff and prepare and present to y'all budget. So for us, this is a big nine and really shows a vision of the city. I'm proud to have a stellar team before you to present. I'm proud of the city council that has made investments in an effort to grow wisely. From the infrastructure that supports our growing community to our parks and trails, we know that every dollar matters. This council continues to make substantial investments in our water and wastewater system to ensure our future generation of stability and prosperity, something that 92% of our residents told us was a priority on the last resident survey. This council's commitment to securing federal funds to support our water treatment plan expansion is an example of stellar leadership. We became the first city in Texas to ever receive that funding. This council continues to support road building, to support reconstruction and connections to improve transportation, again, something that this community continues to ask for every single year in a survey. This council supports innovation through our state-recognized program with Uber, something that we are very proud of. Our addition of public art funded through hotel tax and decisions that ensure the goals of our community are met along our major corridors. We continue to see you support that. The continuation of council support for public safety is not only through our award-winning, our police department, but the addition of a short-term rental program that we hope to help protect and assist neighbors. The addition of a public safety director to aid in taking on ambulance transport services was also added and to remain, to allow us to remain fully prepared for. The support we've had from this council, even supporting the unsung heroes like IT. Just a few weeks ago, if y'all can remember, many planes couldn't even take off. We were attacked in the same way. We had an IT department that worked all night to make sure that we were safe. And I bet y'all didn't hear one thing about it. The 911 system in other cities was attacked a couple of weeks ago. Hours sustained and never went under whenever we saw many surrounding communities have quite a bit of a hiccup. The council continues to support a library that is far-reaching to all parts of our community, from individuals that are seeking for jobs, for adult programs, children programs, small businesses that need support. This council has supported that space in which we know is not only for their snakes, I mean snacks, but for their community-first mindset. Hosting events such as Kitty Cafe, plant swaps, blood drives, trans clothing swaps, storytimes and crafts. This council continues to support a vibrant community with events such as Deutschenfest with Slice, Music in the Park Series, Rock the Block, Coffee and Fuel, which is my personal favorite, and many more. This council supports quality of life by continuing to invest in parks, from adding shade to every, every part to multiple replacements of park equipment, from the first menorah lighting to a cardboard boat regatta because we leave Shane unsupervised, to a monarch sanctuary, to the beautifully-kept Lake Flugerville, to sending employees, and even sending employees this year that qualified for state rodeo competition. We know that there is investment into the quality of life in our trails and our parks for everyone. Those enhancements don't just enhance our daily lives of our people, they've also earned us the title, the Trail Capital of Texas this past year. Turns out, all those silly shirts that we make actually pay off. These decisions have created a community that people love to live in. The ribbon cuttings are too many to count. If you keep up with what you were setting the stage for, for development to come, I can't even keep up with the amount of businesses that have opened, not just in this past year, but as I was looking over this past decade, from the amount of hotels to businesses to restaurants, it is absolutely extraordinary. The council is not only forward-thinking, but continues to be grateful for our past. They supported reconstruction of the historic water tower and the complete remodel of the beautiful Bowles House with special honor to Clarence Bowles, our very first city manager. Our partnerships across the state are too lengthy to name. What we do know is that Flugerville is well-recognized as an organization that progressively leads in each of our professional circles. And to me, it's no wonder that Flugerville is known to be the best place to work in central Texas. So our employees take up about 41% of this budget. They're how we absolutely get everything done, and I will put our culture up against any culture that's truly unbeatable. Our voluntary turnover rate in the past 12 months was 11%. National average on municipalities, cities and local government is around 35%. Most of our employees are the unsung heroes. The team members that work around the clock to provide water, from drainage projects, they serve our community in extremely dangerous situations. And they have our community at the forefront of their mind all the time about safety. Our shelter dogs, on the other hand, are complete show-offs and they like to make TV appearances. But for the most part, our employees are the unsung ones behind the scenes and doing what y'all have seen done. You will see a proposed investment in these employees that is from a market study performed last year, and we strive to remain competitive so we can retain them and continue to recruit. But do please adopt our dogs, we would like them to leave. Staff is thrilled to present this budget. It's not just numbers for us, it's a vision for our community, the community that brings in awards like the Hermes Award and National Night Out Award. The community is not shy to provide us input, the community that is diverse and welcoming, the community that we are honored to serve. We're also proud to present to this council, the council that makes thankless and has a thankless and an unpaid job, the council that commits to countless hours of listening and serving its people, the council that uses your free time to attend conferences, to attend educational systems, and you've even added to your lunch calendar the opportunity to serve once a month here at a council meeting. Y'all serve on things like Campo, Can, CapCog, Clean Air Coalition, Senior Access, Blue Santa, et cetera, the list goes on. The council that supports PF101, Walk the Talk, the Loch Ness Monster shenanigans, and even recently went and pulled a lift station and cleaned bathrooms and worked at a shelter so you could experience what our employees experience. The council that lets staff sit in its seats, which I can say that no other council I've ever heard of would allow such a thing so that you could understand empathy and we could as well. That was the day that I saw many of our staff laughing when I thought I might lose my job after a part of it, but y'all went on laughing and enjoying it. The council that celebrates Ramadan with its neighbors, the mayor that never misses an opportunity to educate the public through Flugerville Focus. We may not always get it perfect, I recognize that, but we do, what I do know is that there's not a finer group of public servants than the ones that are sitting before you today, a team that serves by putting community first. In combination with a fine group of employees, we have residents that continue to state that they want roads, traffic improvements, parks, water and wastewater, and public safety. With this proposed budget, you'll see less than a penny tax rate increase, and we are confident we can continue to invest in the future, dollar by dollar, and each of those dollars matter. We're proud of where we live, we're proud of where we work, and we hope that we're painting you a picture of what is yet to become. Thank you for letting me share. I don't often get to brag on our community and our people, but it is with that, I'm super proud and honored to have Tracy and James present to you our annual budget.
Thank you, Serena, and I don't think you left anything out, and certainly I will, if that's the best word for that. I'm just totally impressed by the staff that you have onboard and the creativity and actually the vision they have for this community, which I think makes a huge difference in a lot of the initiatives and projects that we've had. Oh, and you did leave one out, I think, unless I missed it, and that was the very creative initiative of the Running of the Goats.
Same process.
Look forward to that next year.
Thank you.
But thank you very much. Counsel, any other comment on? Nope. All right. Tracy, James, Caesar, can you see this?
No, but that's fine. They never, they do that on purpose.
Well, no, I noticed it was a little, it was like set up for me here, which...
There we go, thank you. No, the mayor can't see.
No, I can see.
Thank you. I think they do it on purpose, just to, just get that dig under me.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tracy Waldron, Finance Director here. And we can't start the budget process presentation without talking about the leadership and the strategic goals that council has provided. These are guiding principles for the budget planning process. The city does seek community input through open houses throughout the year and for various things, the Aspire 2040, master plans, anything that we're bringing forward, we try to have open forums for those. We do a biennial residential, residence survey. Communications has posted for citizens' input and provided the city secretary's email, and there will be two public hearings during the budget process moving forward. The updated proposed document may have some additional text. The only thing that we changed from the document that you received on August 1st was a change in the hotel occupancy tax, which we will cover during the presentation. So the tax rate is made up of two components, the maintenance and operations, which funds our general fund, and the interest and sinking, which is our debt service component. The city has received certified tax rules, and these tax rates, the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate, have been calculated. The no new revenue rate is required to produce the same amount of tax revenue for the current fiscal year as the previous fiscal year, and the voter approval rate is the maximum rate allowed by law without voter approval via mandatory election. The calculation includes the prior year MNO and no new revenue rate plus the amount necessary to cover debt service. This is just a very simple calculation to show how you get to the voter approval rate and also how a citizen would be able to calculate their total, our total tax levy. So our property tax rate, this chart is comparing last year's rates to the current calculated rates. So our, our no new revenue rate is calculating at 52.59. The no new MNO tax rate is 24.45. The voter approval rate is 25.30, which gives us a total voter approval tax rate of 54.28. Our debt service rate does include 83 million issuance in the future to continue to support our CIP projects. So based on the tax rate and the tax levy, this just gives you an idea of, at the no new revenue rate, we would generate a tax levy of 59.05 million. And at the proposed rate, the voter approval rate, it would be 61.05 million. Interest and sinking would be at the same rate either way. It's about $2 million more in the general fund for the voter approval rate. So a comparison of our average homestead value, property taxes, last year's valuation to last year's tax rate with this year's average taxable valuation to this year's tax rate, it isn't, it is showing an average annual increase of 45. City staff has done a selected audit, looking at properties across the city. This chart, not all properties will see an increase, they could see an increase.
I found quite a few that recognize the decrease.
So this chart compares the tax rate with the tax paid by the average homestead. The rate has been trending down until fiscal '24 when the debt rate was increased. The blue bars represent the amount paid in taxes by the average homestead. From fiscal '24 to current, the taxes paid has increased right at about $1,000. If you were to compare this to the CPI increase, this would be around 12.04. This chart shows the average, the appraised value growth as it compares to the commercial and the residential, so you can kind of see the trend lines of those two types of properties and how they've been growing over the last several years.
Those appraised, the appraised taxable value, that is after any of the adjustments and deals and whatever citizens...
Right, that's the certified value that we end up with. So this is a benchmarking, it's a comparison of communities of our average size. All of these communities are going at or close to the voter approval rate, and these rates have been verified with these communities. And just to note that these communities are at different stages in growth and infrastructure needs, and, you know, right now, Flugerville is in a high-growth, high-infrastructure need. So getting into some of the key budget assumptions on our revenue side, we are targeting a fund balance of 35%. This budget was built on the voter approval tax rate. The tax, the sales tax growth was, is at 5% of projected 2024 amounts, which we feel like is conservative, but it's what we're trending right now. And the cost allocation from the utility funds has been removed from the revenue category, and we'll talk about that a little bit more later. On the expense side, there are no new personnels added in this budget. There's an annual 3% increase on the base salaries. Health insurance costs increased, this budget that you have is at 15%. Since we produced this budget, we have found out that we are not going to see quite that much of an increase, it's going to be closer to 5%, which is good, and so we will make those changes before the final budget comes back to you for approval. It includes the emergency medical services, the $1.3 million contract that was approved recently. And we increased the vehicle lease amount, so each year we're trying to turn over our fleet and add more of our replacement fleets, and so this budget includes 24 of those vehicles being added to the lease program. And we also had several contracts for police equipment. These, these agreements are for leased equipment. And in fiscal '24, that first year, it was funded out of the capital improvement project, but that's been moved back over to the operating budget for fiscal '24. Yep, existing, that's right at 36.7 million. And then we also have included the debt service that will, will take care of the 83 million once that has been issued in the spring. Some of the projects that are included that needed that future funding are Public Works Complex, Flugerville Parkway East, FM 685 Corridor, and East Pecan Street. So this is just a very high, high level of all of the major funds. Not going to go through all of these, but these are the total expenditures for each one of these major funds, total being about $857 million of a total budget. Now specifically in the general fund summary, this is a, we're comparing fiscal '24 projections to the fiscal '25 proposed. We feel like that's a better comparison between the two. And so revenue is actually going down from the projected fiscal '24, but that has a lot to do with the cost allocation being, the accounting method being changed on that, and also the city received a legal settlement in '24, which obviously is one time, that doesn't repeat each year. And we also brought in 1.5 million in parkland developer-funded funds to fund some of these park improvements we've seen this year.
Casey, can you expand on cost allocation being a derivative as to why there's a difference between the two?
So in fiscal '24 and prior, the cost allocation actually came in as a revenue to the city. That accounting change, it should be brought in as a credit to the expense because it's really a, it's a shared service from the utility funds, and so in making that accounting change, it does blur our comparison year-over-year for this first year of that transition. Next year, it'll be a lot cleaner because we'll be comparing apples to apples. So instead of it being 3.6 million coming in as a revenue, which it did in '24, it's actually going to be a credit to the expenses in '25.
I know James and staff, y'all have been working hard to get a specific formula and line of demarcation so we have a full bench to compare back and forth and further. Is there anything else that you see that you may want to tweak for the upcoming year outside of that, or is it, are we pretty much at, okay, this is how things should be allocated, should be addressed, and we should move forward on it?
I am hopeful that we've caught everything for this budget.
And the other item was how we charge the city.
The utility water.
For this utility, so there's a couple, two or three pretty big structural changes that we think should satisfy moving forward.
So we'll touch on some of those specifically to the general fund. These are the revenue changes. So 2.5 million addition in property taxes. The increase, adjusted net taxable values increased by 693 million. 66% of that was new properties. I just did want to highlight that this does not include the turds. You know, we removed the turds from that conversation. And then on the sales tax, we're seeing a $968,000 increase year-over-year. It's 5% over the fiscal '24 projection. And then in the other revenues, it's actually seeing a decrease related to what I just spoke of before, which is the park, the parkland developer paid. We could see a budget amendment in '25 to fund parks if something came about that was appropriate, but we did see 1.5 million come in in 2024.
That sales tax number, 5% growth, I'd like to see that, but I'm concerned that that might be excessively optimistic. Where were we this year over last year? Wasn't it 3%?
We were 4.
4%.
Yes.
This year over last year.
We budgeted 4 over our projection from last year, but our, we actually came in higher than we had projected, which is why we're actually going to exceed our budget in 2024. So the 5% I feel comfortable with, it's what we're trending year-over-year right now. And so that's why originally we were sitting at like 3%, but I've continued to watch it month over month, and we're, we're trending comfortably at the 5% year-over-year.
So it's still a fiscally conservative number based on the trend you've seen over the various years leading to this point?
And moving, moving a percentage up or down doesn't move the needle a whole lot. So even if it came in at 4 or 3, we'd still be okay, but we think 5, we want to try to be as accurate as we can. And we've seen the last several months have been closer to 8%, right? So we, we understand the facts, we're kind of looking at the tea leaves too, about what could happen in November as well, right? That could have an impact depending on which way that goes. So, but given that we've seen several months, you know, over 8%, if there is somewhat of a dip, we still feel comfortable with 5. If we come a little bit underweight, we'll be okay.
All right.
General fund expenditures, so these are the highlights, these are the main changes that we can point out for you in personnel. We do have the market study adjustments that were approved in fiscal '24, so all of those are flowing into fiscal '25. Health insurance costs, the proposed budget was at 15%.
And Tracy, those are the market study adjustments, the study themselves, not necessarily the applicable adjustments, correct?
They are what was, the adjustments that were made during fiscal '24.
Okay, so not only the market study adjustment, but the study itself, but actually the specific allocation, the specific FTE.
The application of the market study, yes.
So Tracy, on the health insurance cost, you said earlier it was 15%, and then it's coming in lower, so is that number the higher number or?
In this proposed budget, we are still sitting at the 15%. That information came in fairly late.
Okay.
And then obviously the annual 3% cost of living, that would be increased as of October 1st. And on the operating side, we've talked about the credit from cost allocation, emergency medical services, the 1.3 million dollar contract, vehicle leases, the police equipment.
Tracy, how many city, I'm so sorry, you said it over, I want to make sure people reiterate the cost of living adjustment. How many other cities have you seen municipalities do the same thing to make sure that we keep up with inflation and other things for everybody?
I'm not aware of any other city that's not doing at least 3%.
It's pretty consistent.
But in, in practice, people, they'll, so when we go out and we do these studies, they'll say, okay, we pay this position between 60,000, 80,000. Okay, what are you actually paying that person? 85,000. Okay, so let's get your real numbers. So we're kind of going through this process for like people are, they might do this one-time market study, but through the year as people turn over and they're finding out what it costs to replace somebody that's out in the market, those are getting, so there's like the one time, but everybody's chewing up, including us, as we go through the year, as we have, as we have turnover.
How do you, how do you compensate for that? Because obviously, just like you said, you go and ask for a specific number and then you find out a couple of months later, well, no, that's not actually what you need to pay because this is what the market demands.
Yeah, I mean, you've got to, it's, it's, it's an art and a science, and it depends on the type of position, how hard it is to fill. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of nuances to it, and we really look at every single one, case by case, very critically, to make those tough calls.
And for capital outlay, I know in fiscal '24, we had around $4 million. This year, we're only looking at around 3.1, so it's a little bit of a decrease, and it's basically using available fund balance to try to get down to that target, 35%.
So it's deceptive, we're still investing a ton in capital, it's just a little bit less than last year.
So just a little bit of a deeper dive into the sales tax. So we were seeing experienced, we experienced this deeper growth from fiscal '18 to '22. It's continued to grow, but just at a, at a little bit shallower of a growth rate. And so, as we talked about earlier, we, we still feel like the 5% is conservative and not shooting too high. So the hotel occupancy tax, you'll see a little bit more about this fund in this budget as we're trying to really ramp up the tourism aspect and trying to seek ways to use this, this fund in those ways. The only thing that was changed from the August 1st was we took out, there was a capital outlay item in here, and we took that out, so you won't see that in the book that I provided this evening. So we'll end up at the end of fiscal '25 with 1.6 million in any fund balance in that fund.
What was the capital outlay item?
It was a van.
We're thinking about doing a van and wrapping it and kind of making a mobile billboard sort of thing, it also would help with transport equipment, but we're looking at other available sort of thing. It also would help with transport equipment, but we're looking at other available. There's, there's another vehicle that we think we could adjust and be able to utilize that and maybe not do the, the van this year. So we're just going to make it work this year.
Homer Rudy went there?
Yeah, I was laughing because I was thinking to myself, it's like, and I heard van, I was like, wait, she didn't say that.
Down by the river?
Down by the river. Yeah.
Some of the things this budget will highlight is public art, economic incentives, the promotion and marketing of tourism, tourism training, tourism memberships, so that we can start broadening that tourism knowledge, and we're really ramping up a short-term rental program. So switching over to our enterprise, our utility funds, water and wastewater fund summary. So you'll notice that this fund, based on growth and based on the rates that will go into effect October 1st, we will see a significant amount of revenue increase from year over year. The operating expenditures really are not changing all that much. You'll see the increase where the debt service is going from 22 million to 29 million, and that will just continue to grow from years out. They also had a pretty sizable capital outlay in fiscal 24, and that request has been dropped. They still have a lot of infrastructure projects. They're just not necessarily being paid for out of operating funds. Their fund balance is going from 18 million to 25, almost 26 million. And we do want to keep a close eye on this fund. And if, if these fund balance trends hold true, we want to look at seeing if we can move some of these funds over to the capital improvement and start paying for some of those capital improvements with the cash that we have available over the 35%.
So these applicable funds going to be used on water and wastewater projects, correct?
Yes.
But what you're saying is that if in fact there are some capital expenditures that we're able to utilize based on whatever the fund balance is over there, then those can be allocated to other projects?
In the water and wastewater. Yep. We do have restrictions, I'm sorry, we do have restrictions on some of our funding to set aside reserves. So we have to make sure we meet those reserves first.
What's our reserve policy?
It has to do with the Texas Water Development Board funds and the reserves that have to be set aside to meet those.
So, my apologies. What, what is, yeah, what are they specifically asking for? What percentage?
And it depends on which one. If you're asking about a general fund balance.
Oh, no, no, no.
Well, the reserves are one point, it's one point to, it's a multiplier over the revenue that you bring in that year.
Okay. So it's a multiplier on the revenue applicable to that specific year?
That current year.
Not then it's specific to all the different ones.
Can't look at the fund balance, can't look at the, yeah.
Very cool.
Yep.
Okay.
But we want, we want to put this money to work. So we, we think this is where we're going to land in a few months. When we verify that, we'll bring, we'll bring a list of projects to start spending that money and get it closer to 35%.
What about the, what capital outlay got taken out?
It's just that there was less requests for this fiscal year coming out of operating funds. They had a, a larger list within the 24 budget.
Yeah. Okay. So they had a larger list than the 24 budget, which, you know, what they'd like, and for specific equipment, and that was fulfilled that year. So consequently, that's why this one's a lot lower, right?
Yeah. They just had less needs being funded out of the operating budget.
We watched capital outlay on those funds really vary year to year. They don't stay very steady.
Well, no, I just, you know, part of this is, that is a significant difference, but it makes sense if, hey, this was fulfilled this specific year, next year we don't need that much because we already done what we need to do on this one.
Plenty of projects to spend the money on.
So those mid-year capital projects are going to be, what, are we talking about improvements in the water plant? Are we talking about increasing the pipeline capacity? What are these, the, there's that asterisk down there. What are we talking about?
They would already be projects that are in the CIP. We would just switch it to a cash funded versus a future debt. So I mean, they're already identified projects within the capital improvement program. It's just the funding would change.
So does the project get built any faster, or is it just how the project is funded?
Just how the project is funded. Wouldn't really change the timeline, and it would, might reduce like future debt that we would have to sell.
Okay.
Yeah. Leveraging as much of your cash as you can to, to reduce your interest costs and the overall cost of the projects.
Okay.
So this is a recap of the rate adjustments. This is using the same amount that was brought to you back in July during the work sessions. So the monthly increase on the average residential user is $18.65 between the water and the wastewater bill.
Which to be clear, we reduced from the previous request in consideration of, you know, honestly, we know inflation and what's going on with people, citizens right there. So we'd rather have it now slow and steady, you know, as opposed to hopefully the economy for most folks catches up with that afterwards.
Some of the expenditure highlights for this fund, their personnel are going to have all the same adjustments that we discussed in the general fund. Operating really didn't change all that much. The debt service is really what's driving the increase. So operating increased 7.9 million, 7.3 of that is debt service. And then just less capital equipment purchased, basically less requests for capital funds. So year over year, it's a $2 million decrease. Still doing plenty of projects. The other fund that is in the enterprise funds or the utility funds, as we call them, is our solid waste fund. This is our recycling center, but the majority of it is our third-party waste provider, solid waste provider. So this fund is really not, not seeing much change, and we're also not proposing any, any increases on the rates that are, the citizens, customers, I'm so sorry. So right now the rate is $22.37 per month. So that brings us to our budget timeline and next steps. And so we will have a budget public hearing end of August, and then we will have a tax rate hearing September 24th. And that's where we will adopt a tax rate and a budget. Any questions?
Counselor, any questions?
And what we'll vote on regarding the proposed tax rate is the highest will go?
Today, yes. Later on in the meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next item is a presentation from Waste Connections Lone Star. And I have Tre To is here representing Waste Connections.
Thank you, Mayor. Also just going to introduce Trey. Our, our agreement with Waste Connections allows us, allows us to request that they come twice a year and speak, present to you guys and inform you about how the year went, you know, things that they're working on. So I've asked Trey to come tonight. Thought this would be a good time while we're talking about the budget. So, I don't get it.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam City Manager. Again, thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and speak. So solid waste, everybody's concerned about service and things of that nature. So we keep coming back, talking about completion of routes, missed pickups, the cart replacement timeframe, and bulk services. Those are the key items that citizens are concerned about, and we try to do our best to accommodate. What we talked about last fall when we came and presented was doing route audits and adjusting for the need of the growth of the city of Flugerville. So we audited those routes in Q1, and then we had kind of put an extra truck out there in the meantime. And so we've adjusted those routes completely. We've added an additional route to better provide service for the citizens of Flugerville.
Where's that route located?
Uh, that's, that's a little hard to, we basically took pieces of routes where kind of growth was overgrowing and just kind of put it where the growth was for that day.
What specific day? Are you, you're looking at various different routes, one specific date and specific areas?
Every day, every day of the week. We, that route is added five days a week that the trucks additionally for the five days. So.
So my apologies, maybe a better way to ask this, from what I'm hearing you say is that there are, you, you audited all the various different routes?
Mm-hmm.
And then you added an additional route to buttress what you were doing, and you're saying that additional route is applicable to five days, five various, five days, not one specific date?
Correct. Yeah. When I say a route, I'm saying a five-day full week worth of work. So, so we added that additional truck every day of the week.
I think I understand what Councilman Mater is saying. Let me try to.
Okay, sorry.
Reframe it. They're both attorneys, so.
[laughing]
Let's redirect the witness. Geographically, where is the, is the new route? Is it on the north side of town? Is it on the south side of town? Is it kind of in snake through the center of town? Is that the question you're asking?
Yeah. And I'm wondering if we, if, if we're two ships passing in the night, what's your definition of route?
Of a route, like we have 20 routes roughly running in the city of Flugerville every day. So we added, we went from 19 to 20 routes, five days a week is what I'm.
Well, what I heard you say is that you, basically the density of a route grows as people move in, you get more houses there, and so that route becomes, the fixed route becomes more onerous over time. And so what I heard you say is that you took segments of multiple routes off to kind of reduce the density of that route and add another one probably in the middle of them all.
Yeah.
But not really, not really answering your question because the new route isn't like in a new growth area. It's spread over a large geographic area.
Yeah. Cause, cause from what I'm gathering, particularly when you just said, you said we hired, we added another truck to what Councilman McDonald and Councilman Rogers are saying. It sounds to me that we got another FTE, which is, and the route is composed of various other routes and that, and those people in that truck will run that route during the five days buttressing what you're doing. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah. Cause we, we have about 800 to 1,000 homes, depending on if it's an automated route or a rearload route. And so when the density grows over those numbers, we take pieces off of the growth areas and combine it into creating its own route for that truck.
So is Route 20 continuous, or is Route 20, you know, three blocks on the west side, three blocks in the middle, and three blocks in the east side?
It's continuous. Like it will, so, yeah. Like you, you were explaining earlier, like when they grow kind of in the middle, they're taking what makes sense of kind of flow. So we're not jumping, that truck's not jumping from one side of the town or one side of a subdivision. It's a continuous section that makes kind of a routing optimization sense to stay in one's, one area.
So is the new, the new route goes down railroad, or the new route goes down 130?
Depends on whether it's a Friday route or not.
Is it, is it the, is it the same every day, or is it different on Friday than it is the rest of the week?
I think Councilman Donald had, had the best explanation.
And I'm sure you use AI to optimize all the routes now.
Well, that's what I was, I was literally, when he said automa, I was like, okay, I wanted to hear more about.
We do not yet use AI. We, we're still a little bit old school in the solid waste industry. We do use some routing softwares, but a lot of it is boots on the ground supervisors, leadership. And we look at kind of where home counts have grown and just making sure that we're not overloading. Because when we overload, those were kind of the issues, Q4, Q1, last year's service related. So we wanted to alleviate that. We added the additional truck in the meantime as we figured it out. That was more kind of piecemeal, kind of all over the place. And then when we strategically kind of dropped it in, I apologize, I don't know the exact area of where that route was added off the top of my head.
Well, that would be, again, you're going to get a presentation. I think that would maybe something really good to present. Additionally speaking, you said automated routes. Can you give us definition? What is an automated route?
Uh, so automated is what you'll see with the, the grabber on the side of the truck. It's a one-man truck. The driver stays in the truck. He has a joystick and extends, grabs a cart, dumps it on the side, sets it back. The rearload, more manual, got the helper on the back and manually loading in the rear of the truck.
How many of your trucks are automated as compared to rearload?
Uh.
Or just the ratio?
We're, we're actively, as we buy new equipment, we're adding more and more automated because the labor thing. Labor's an issue for everybody, and getting people to manually load is a problem. Right now in Flugerville, I would say we're probably the 60-40 ratio of automated to rearload and trying to ever increase that. So.
What's the industry standard?
Uh, it kind of depends on the market that you're in. When you're in higher density areas, kind of like Flugerville, you'd have a higher ratio. You know, I don't think anybody's at 100, but you know, I think we're, we're in the ballpark and we're constantly improving. Every year we add additional capital.
So my apologies, probably a better question to ask this. And just you said you compared it to this area, you compared it to this geographical area. In this geographical area, how does that compare? You said ballpark. I mean, you can either go ahead and be having out at first, or you can be hitting the ball over the centerfield wall.
Valid. I think from what we kind of see across the board, I think that 60 to 70% ratio is right in the, for this greater Austin area, I think that's rotten ballpark for that. And like I said, as we continue to add assets year over year, we're prioritizing capital for the automated trucks. And so that's what we.
In this, in this area, what's an analogous sized city that you serve?
Uh, you, we have Flugerville, Taylor. I'd say Taylor is probably closer. You guys are more of our larger residential side of the scope of work that we perform. And so with that, we're, we're going to keep an eye on that so we don't get behind the eight ball going forward. We're constantly monitoring the, kind of where the growth trends are, where new subdivisions are going in and trying to stay ahead of that as we get orders for new carts and things of that nature. Keep that up to date and keep adding when necessary.
In some areas, especially in the Blackhawk area where now we have Round Rock Refuse, and there's a couple of other haulers that are not Waste Connections, I would assume that that's, should have helped your, not efficiency, but at least the, the ability to cover more areas in less time and not have missed days and things of that nature.
That is correct. Yeah. When, when that transition occurred, it did allow us a few more assets to, to use to throw into town and.
Well, okay. So let me ask you another, I mean, again, so given that, and I think that's just on the, on the east side of 130, did you reallocate assets to other areas because of that?
Uh, yes. When we lost some of that, we, we did reallocate, yeah.
And when did that happen?
Uh, that was, I believe in Q2, I believe. I could be completely wrong, but I've slept a little bit since then. Or I'm thinking, there was those HOAs that left, disincorporated this, talking about Blackhawk. Or might be talking two different things.
No, you was talking about when did the transition, when did you reallocate assets when we started having other waste haulers operate in the areas? What, what period was that, I guess?
I believe that was in Q2.
Q2 is four months though, right?
April, three months.
Yeah, three months.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, that was, I think it was April, March, April, May, somewhere.
So have you seen since, let's just use April as your baseline. Have you seen a decrease in missed routes, given that you had the reallocation of those trucks for that time period?
Uh, we had, we had some hiccups in that transition period in April with missed pickups bumping up a little bit right there in the front end of that, I believe. And then on the back end, it's leveled out there. And the front end of that, I believe. And then on the back end, it's leveled out there for a period. Then we were running pretty solid there and at the benefit of a very mild, uh, wet most part of the summer cooler for, you know, historical Texas. Uh, when the, the heat hit about, uh, six, seven weeks ago, we did experience uh, a little bit of turnover that drove up a little bit of missed pickups. Again, got restaffed up and got it taken care of, uh, moving forward. Those are kind of the April and then the end of June, first of July, we had some hiccups when the heat kind of came on and we lost some people and then got some more people trained up in, in the roles.
And so it sounds like, well, no, I don't want to put words enough. I'll just hear what you have to say. You're, are, are you saying whenever it gets more hot outside, you lose FTEs?
FTEs.
People are drivers.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, this industry is pretty challenging with people when it's hot. Uh, the trucks are hot. I mean, even though there's insulation and stuff, you're sitting right on top of a, a diesel motor that doesn't turn off. So if, in the cabs, it's hot. You get out of the truck, it's hot. So, uh, this year we, we experienced a delay and when we typically see turnover, because usually when it hits in May, it flips a switch and we see a, a little bit of a turnover there. And then usually throughout the summer, it's kind of continual where this year, uh, being a milder summer, we didn't experience it till later. And that's extended, uh, you know, it's just now getting hot really in September. So that's the, this year is kind of a benefit, benefit for us because it's, it's been kind of one blip instead of two, two to three blips of heat causing turnover. So it's been better this year.
What's your turnover percentage?
As it stands, we are thirty one percent.
Oh, that's for drivers, drivers?
Yeah, that's thirty one percent. Uh, so going back historically, the first time I came to council during that time period, we were closer to fifty percent turnover. So we've really invested in the culture, training, uh, retention programs, uh, reward programs. We do a lot to keep the employees vested as well as paying. Uh, we try to be closer to the top of the market for qualified and, um, veteran drivers and things of that nature. Then we've also implemented, uh, programs to help, uh, tenured helpers that have typically been on the back of the truck with no real career path to earning a higher wage and things of that nature. So we now own, uh, two driver academies in the U S, uh, one in Houston and the one in the Carolinas. And so we've, uh, we've sent three people from our Flugerville yard that were historically helpers, uh, sent them through this training and now they're drivers in, in the area. So really investing in the employees and it's showing to have a benefit, uh, as well as the, the culture changes we've made and just the focus on training, turnover, uh, retention and that type of thing. So it's, it's been a very positive kind of two year process and we're, we're still focused on it. Thirty percent is not where we want to be. Uh, we want to keep driving that number down. We, we know that, uh, we're the better when we're in that fifteen to twenty percent range. And so we've still got about ten percent more to go to get really kind of premium for the industry standard type of situation. So we're, we're on the cusp and we're marching towards it. Speaking on missed pickups, year over year, I, I pulled the first six months of the year going back last year versus this year, we're seeing a twenty percent reduction of when, uh, missed pickups are called in if we don't recover in that twenty four hour period. Uh, so we've had a twenty percent reduction year over year. If you extrapolate it back over to twenty two during that period, it's of like fifty five percent reduction. So the investment, the people and the, the routing and all that things has helped driving down these missed pickup that we're not able to recover in twenty four hours. So really focused effort on that. And you'll see, like we were talking about earlier, the, the March, April blip and then the, the May blip there when, uh, we had a blip there too. But for the most part, uh, drastically different than year prior. So we're proud of that. It's not where we want to be. We're going to keep, keep striving to improve that year over year.
I'm not sure you have any control over that. I mean, you shouldn't miss a bin if it's out, right?
Correct. Yeah.
I mean, I've never had that experience personally.
Yeah.
And I'm sure your drivers are pretty conscientious about that.
Yeah.
So your missed pickups are more likely to occur if the resident doesn't put their bin out in time or forgets or they're on the wrong day or whatever it may be.
Yes. And we try to communicate that with the, the city's customer service department. We pull video, uh, GPS and things of that nature. And, but we still make every effort to go back and service the citizen, even if they didn't get it out in time.
Exactly.
Where the case may be.
So my apologies mayor, I've actually seen in our neighborhood, I mean, streets completely missed. On the applicable day, you know, quite literally. And I'm just, and I'm wondering, you know, you know who they're going to complain to? And so I'm, I'm trying to better understand how, I mean, these are like swaths of areas, not like someone rushing to go ahead and do that, the thing's coming from there. And if you've, if you have a smaller area that you need to go ahead and cover or that you're covering now, um, and you're able to allocate those areas, I was trying to better understand what could have happened with that. I think which is a part of it is that the FTEs and the truck rates, other parts of it is just, um, I guess you were talking about the specific vehicle that's being used, but, um, I mean, you, you, you have made improvements. That's, that's for sure. But it, it is definitely disconcerting. And, you know, whenever you see people who quite literally put their trash down on a regular basis and still be missing them regularly.
Correct. Uh, we did see that going back a couple of months ago, there was some frequency, a couple of weeks in a row that we had some areas like that. There's communication on our end of not communicating, uh, some problems early enough to the city to get ahead of it. And then on our end on the, when stuff happens.
How would you, how would you, to the mayor's point, so how would you communicate to the city to get ahead of it? Are you cognizant of that? So missed? Or I'm just trying to better understand what you're saying.
Yeah. So if like, say midday, something breaks down, we have an unforeseen
Okay.
road call or something like that, and it's going to down the equipment for the day. Uh, so in those cases, we do is the normal routes complete theirs and then we redeploy this, the, the trucks in Flugerville that are used to Flugerville, uh, or to come back into those areas. And so sometimes it's limited space and time where they weren't able to go dump and they've got limited room. And that's where you see that roll over to the next day that we try to communicate as best as possible and recover as early as the next day as possible. So.
So how many trucks do you have allocated for Flugerville?
Twenty, twenty, twenty one.
Twenty one trucks?
Yeah.
That are actually on a route?
Yes, sir. That, that's just routed. That's not spares or anything else. That's just the routed trucks for Flugerville.
How many spares do you have?
So for residential, we, uh, at the Flugerville yard, we run, we have about six, and then we have the south yard as well to deploy trucks that's, you know, twenty, thirty minutes down the road. So we have about the same down there. So we have about fifteen spare residential trucks and that's a mix of automated, rearload, whatever the case may be. Uh, but we have the two yards to play off when it comes to residential services.
Now, I asked previously for a comparison city and you gave us Taylor, which honestly raised my eyebrow, but what do you normally have on a, like a city, a, a city our size?
Sorry, I left off Lakeway for that. Lakeway's more comparable. I, I do apologize. Uh, Lakeway's running, um, twelve, depending, twelve to fifteen, depending on the day. So they're more comparable and it's further away. So it's a little bit more challenging sometimes.
You talked, uh, earlier about capacity and, uh, I assume the trucks fill up at different rates depending on how much trash you have in that neighborhood where you get a half trash can, half full trash can that doesn't take up as much space. And the, the truck, I assume in some instances might get full before you get to the end of the route. Am I wrong about that?
Yeah, it's not so much the half cart. It's, uh, the brush, the bulk. That's what eats up space because you get things. You get air pockets when you have things that aren't normal household trash. Household trash smashes very well, compacts very high. Uh, when you get into the, uh, mattresses are the, the killer of space in our trucks. Uh, brush killer of space because it's a sponge. It'll constantly push out. Those are the type of issues that we come into there. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the brush and the bulk here in a minute on the, the slides as well. So.
Yeah. I live at the very end of my route. So every once in a while they, they, they stop three houses before they get to my route. Uh, and I assume that that's the, uh, that's the sort of thing.
Because they've run out of room?
Yeah. But what? Yeah, that they're, they're running out of room, but you know, uh, they routinely get back there the next day. So.
Yeah.
I don't have any complaints.
Apologies about that. Kind of years prior, the cart delivery was an issue, uh, not being up to date and, uh, timely with cart deliveries. Uh, we've made that a priority this year as well, showing sixty nine percent improvement. Really focused on when we get those new starts or customer swaps or damaged, making sure the customer has a new cart as fast as possible. Really putting a lot of focus on that, implemented some different, uh, procedures with our dispatch and, uh, delivery crews for that nature as well. So that's really showing uh, a real positive benefit. And if you go back, uh, twenty four versus twenty two, you're looking closer to eighty nine percent change. So when we look back at kind of a, a rough year twenty two compared to the current, it's much, much better. So we're keeping focused on that. We want to drive that. Uh, our goal is to drive that almost to zero if possible. So that's, we're getting close. So speaking about the bulk, uh, bulk and brush in Flugerville has been, uh, a challenge since I got here. So what we've, uh, we've had an asset come available.
What, what, where did you choose?
What's that?
What did you choose is your word? Bulk has been what?
A kind of a bane of our existence. Sorry. It, it's been a challenge. It, it really has. It's, uh, the process for picking it up is more, if an automated driver is driving past something, radioing it into somebody. And there wasn't a great paper trail. There wasn't a lot of, uh, accountability for better words because the resident puts it out. We have a bulk app and it's amazing for us. It's a tool that we can track better. Uh, we brought it to council, uh, several times now that we've got it live. Uh, gave it to you guys, put on the website, things of that nature. Uh, when residents use it, it's a super good tool for us because it puts it in the system. It, we can track it, we can log it. For the residents that choose to set it out at the curb, uh, like I said, it's not an automated route. We're radioing it in and trying to relay over radio. So it's kind of, some things get lost in transition and that leads to stuff at the curb longer than we want it there. Uh, so what we're doing is we're training somebody right now currently on a, uh, it's called a couple of different things, a boom or a grapple truck. It's kind of like the video arcade game. It's got like a type of roll off box in the back and then it's got a claw that the driver pulls up to, gets out and kind of reaches down, grabs, loads it up. And we'll have that hopefully deployed here pretty soon to, for one, modify, you know, uh, change the wa, amount of, uh, issues we have with space like we were talking about previously, uh, when our residential trucks are picking that stuff up. That'll give us more space where we're not having to break off extra to go to landfill and things of that nature. So we'll have that asset deployed in town. It'll help especially kind of in that fall, springtime when people are cleaning up that type of stuff to alleviate that stress off the residential routes. The residential trucks are picking residential trash. The boom and bulk truck is picking that type of stuff up. So we're really excited for what this can do. Potentially for the residential service moving forward, once we get this deployed.
I was about to say, and I think you understand, we even had a recent meeting where a citizen brought it up to our attention again about bulk pickup and brush and, and, and brush in particular. And, you know, we made that change, you know, wood chipper program, everything else were there because you guys gave us the heads up that, hey, listen to something we can handle and work on. And actually I think we paid, uh, another, a specific fee allocated for that. I would just highly, highly encourage y'all, if you have an app that's great, work with staff. Staff has done a tremendous job of actually getting stuff advertised to folks because we're still hearing it three years later. And, um, you know, I, I get it and I get that working. I'm glad to see that, but it's, it's a little disconcerting when we, we are paying specifically for that fee and then we still.
Just to follow up on that, I think the resident usage of the app, I think is the, is the key element there.
Yeah.
You know, people in my neighborhood say, hey, why, why isn't this being picked up? And I tell them about the app and they're like, there's an app? So, you know, uh, it's getting, uh, customer awareness, customer buy-in. Um, obviously, you know, we think it's a good idea. It works for, works for me whenever I, I use it, but you know, I have a neighbor half a block away and I told him about the app twice and he's still got stuff sitting in front of his house that's been sitting there for a week. It's very large. It really does require, you know, advanced notice to get it. So.
And we listened and we saw the opportunity to add this and it's, we're really excited that this can alleviate some of that pain in, uh, the residents. And then the complaints come to the customer service or coming to you as a council. Uh, so we're, we're excited to be able to kind of change that operations to something different that will hopefully satisfy the residents and, uh, and make some improvements on the timeliness of it and keep up to date with that. So. That's, uh, we've already kind of talked a little bit, uh, about the app. We still train our drivers to utilize the red tag if it's out of spec, too big, uh, too bulky, out of weight, uh, things of those natures. Even like if it's a recycled cart that's got a bunch of trash in it, you know, tagging those carts, it's a little red tag with a metal scrap tip that we'll put on the cart and driver leaves little notes. It's quick, check some boxes. Trying to utilize those, it's a way to communicate with the customer without the customer having to call the customer service line to figure out why X, Y, and Z. Uh, it's as simple as placement issues because when you're dealing with the automated, uh, equipment, we really ask residents to make sure they're putting that cart four feet away from the mailbox, four feet away from the cars parked on the street, uh, because you're dealing with, uh, hydraulics. And sometimes that's touchy, you can get away. Uh, so space prevents us from doing property damage, uh, to those residents. And so sometimes if someone's, you know, putting that thing, putting the cart too close to objects, work it out, make that note as a reminder to, hey, then try to place it where they would like for them to place the cart away from things. So really trying to train the customer and, uh, limit the questions of why we, you know, did or didn't service or things like that. So it's, it's a simple tool, uh, we try to use. Um, now, some people don't like it and tear it off and go about their day and do the same thing next week. But we, such is life and we try to work with that. So. Kind of talked about the, the app ad nauseam. Outside of that, we are currently working, uh, with my region partner that does kind of municipal work on developing some new uh, schools, specific, uh, recycling program information, training. Kind of trying to focus, starting off kind of the elementary age and then develop a little bit more. Once we get that rolled out, uh, we would like to, you know, make that available to the, uh, ISDs here and as well as hand over to the city to put on websites and do, uh, distribute as how you guys feel necessary. Really trying to kind of bring that to a modern age. We, we've kind of struggled over the past over having some old and outdated. Not as interesting as kids these days would like for it to be. So we're trying to revamp that. So we're, we started working on that, uh, about two months ago. Uh, we're both in-house and a third party organization to help build something that's as interactive and engaging as possible for those age groups. And then once we get kind of a foothold at it, kind of grow it out a little bit and even, even more to the adult age, trying to bring awareness and things like that to what is and what isn't and why and those, those type of things. So we have that going on. And then, uh, don't know if you're aware, but the, kind of the landfill environment in the greater Austin market is changing. Austin city limits is nearing the end of life. Uh, so Waste Connections is invested in, uh, a couple of transfer stations in the market. We have, uh, one off of FM eight twelve and twenty one out in Cedar Creek that more services our south yard. And then we're putting one in off of, uh, Chandler Road and Hutto to make sure that we have, um, a resource to dispose of without having to negatively impact citizens on the timeliness that we're offering out going to the disposal site. So this new transfer station that we're hoping end of next month, uh, maybe in October. It's kind of fluid right now as we finish the completion of the building and, uh, finalize our permits and things of that with TCQ. The travel time from Flugerville to that location is very similar to Austin city limits. So the residents won't see any changes there and there'll be a way for us to ensure that on this side of town that we have a disposal facility that's going to be here for a long time. a long time, um, that'll be internalized, and we transport that down to our, uh, Luling, uh, landfill, so it's a way for us to internalize a little bit, control where our volume goes and how it's handled, so, kind of full circle for us, so that's a huge win for us, given the changing dynamics of, uh, solid waste in the greater Travis Williamson County area, uh, but for this community, it zero impact for our turnaround times, uh, for solid waste, so, in some areas, that can be a, a challenge when a landfill closes, and we have to go to some other place, it can increase time, or we have to add routes and things of that nature, but there, there will be no change to the, the day-to-day operation for us.
Trey, where's your current one that you're saying end of life?
Austin City Limits, off of two ninety, so.
Two ninety end?
Uh, just, we're, uh, I forget the road that's off of, it, uh, I apologize, I don't know the crossroad for that one, it's closer to, they had to one thirty, um.
So, two ninety, near Bluebonde Elementary?
I'm not sure about.
Yeah.
That's what, yeah. Yeah, so, uh, that one's end of life, um, so within a year or two, they'll be shutting that one down.
What do you do with those landfills after end of life?
Uh, so there's a post-closure process through TCQ, monitoring and things of that nature, that's not our landfill, uh, we were previously using waste management, so, um, what they plan to do with that, beyond the regulated TCQ things, I don't know what their plan is there, uh, so, our landfill and post just opened, it's a couple of years old, so it's, it will outlive all of us in this room, it's gonna be.
Where is that?
In Luling.
Luling.
Yeah, so.
And you already have all the permitting and everything else in place?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's all running, so the only thing we're waiting on for the Chandler Road Transfer Station is to finalize the build, and, uh, TCQ to come do their final walkthrough, and then stay on the permit, and we're good to go, so, all that's set up, these things take years of planning and development.
Yes, I did.
And, and things of that nature, so it was a big win for us to push this one over the finish line, we started construction in January, actually, so it's been a, a long build process, um, but we're getting there, so that's, that's a big win for the continuity of service, for sure, going down the long road, so. Any other questions, concerns I can trust tonight?
Questions? None?
Why did you use a phone from the nineteen eighties?
It's what, it's what was available, it's not that cool.
It could be nice, I guess.
Yeah, it's got the stretchy cord, everybody likes the stretchy cord, um, but other than that, we look forward to seeing you guys at TML, and hopefully that's a great opportunity to learn some stuff down in Houston this year for you guys.
Okay, thank you very much, Trey, appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Our next item is executive session item, consultation with legal counsel, present to section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code for discussion regarding David Rogers et al. versus Travis County Emergency Service District number seventeen et al., we're in, um, executive session. at AL. We're in, um, executive session.